Hi everyone and warmly welcome to our Back to Work Future Work Discussions. This is the first one this new year, so happy new year to everyone. We have a great and exciting guest today, as we always have, but today we have Heikki from Hintsä. And now I've told him that he gets to present himself because we need to get his... You get to say what you do yourself, so please introduce yourself to our audience.
Okay, so Heikki Hovinen is the name and Senior Performance Coach is the official title that I do. It tells not so much what I do, the performance coach, it's the angle is quite hard in the title of the performance. And Hintsä Performance Coach and some people might know Hintsä Performance from Formula One and elite sports and also coaching elite executives and so on and so forth. And that is one small part of what we do and the essence is we are coaching people and people from all walks of life actually. And that was always actually the mission of Dr. Aki Hintsä, who founded the company, to coach people and regardless of the societal status where the person comes from and so on and so forth. Having said that, Formula One and elite sports and working with high achievers such as corporate executives has been a great platform and stepping stone for us to build the company and then kind of expand from there to all walks of life. And at this time of like today, 2022, January, we, the company is in the state where we actually can leverage this mission of Dr. Aki Hintsä to work with all sorts of people. And I have had the privilege to be able to work both with the Formula One drivers. Yeah, you could call stars. Sebastian Vettel was one of the drivers I worked two years with as a personal coach. And after that, then I've been working with so many different people from, you know, factory workers to knowledge workers, to consultants, to executives, to university people also.
We would make you, I'm sure.
Yeah.
No, but this is, this is the reason why I wanted you to introduce yourself because it's very important because when we had our initial discussions, we were kind of talking about it that having you as a guest in this series, that is someone going to think that, well, we can't all be superstar athletes or superstar executives or, you know, overachievers, that there needs to be an element of something for someone in all of these discussions. And so this is why it's important that you kind of bring up this. But I think before we go any further, we need to also come clean. We've actually had a quick change of agenda here because when we initially talked about this, having this discussion, you agreed to come and join us. We were talking about this, you know, coaching every, coaching anyone basically to find their own best potential in terms of mental and physical aspects of life. And then this was sometime in the end of summer. So we were thinking that it will be Corona like more or less over and, you know, beginning of the new year, feeling energetic or maybe not so, but anyway, kind of normal. Well, towards normal, that's what we thought. And now today, we're kind of far from it, deep in Omicron. People are feeling, if possible, more tired than for a long time. I hear from colleagues that could someone give me a glimpse of hope? So we kind of changed with Heikki. We decided that we'll try to bring that glimpse of hope through this conversation and kind of talk about things that we all can do. In general, obviously, keeping the initial theme, right? But also now under a lot of pressure. So I'm starting with my usual question, but so what's now central? If we're thinking about this moment and we're all kind of still needing to work if we're not sick. Our resilience is very low. I've told you, I told you, I myself realized this week that I teach this, I talk about this. But it was really, really the first time this week when I felt myself as well that, okay, this, it feels a lot. This general situation and working onward. So what would, what do you think is central now? What would, what would be your sort of, if you know, if we play that everybody watching this is your coachees?
Yeah.
So what do you focus on? What do you do with your head and your physique? What's the ideal holistic approach?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question and I think the Finnish poet Tarberman spoke really well about what human being is like. And the poem goes that human being needs another human to be human. And, and that is something that we are a bit lacking, it seems. When I observe my clients, both the high performers in the corporate world and also like factory workers and people like this, people are quite isolated and, and missing that human interaction. And like, I'll give you an example. Yesterday, I, I had a client, a man working at the factory. And, and he, we have had this program for around half, half a year and it has been revolving around his weight and, and his health. So, so he's quite overweight.
Can I just ask that the program being something that aims for more holistic wellbeing?
Yes.
For everyone in the factory and he's just one participant or?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. He's one participant and, and so that's one of the products. We have in-house coaching and you can book a time for Hintsä coach and we look at the holistic situation. And then in his case, it was mostly revolving around the weight. And, and he came to me and he was, he was like, ah, I was asking, how are you doing? And he was like, oh, I don't know, perhaps a little bit depressed, but I'm not depressed. But yeah, I don't know, I'm not, I don't know what's going on. And then, then we sat down and I started to ask some questions and we, we took a bit of time. And, and then in the end of the session, he, like, I was noticing a couple of things in him. So what was happening? So, so the shift in his posture when we were talking, so the more he was talking, the more he was sort of lifting his posture up. So, and, and in the end of the session, he was saying that, hey, thanks, thanks, thanks for listening. And I feel good and I know what to do. And it was interesting for me and this is actually what my wise wife taught me when, when I got married with her and started to set up a family and so on, that how important is active listening and being really present for the other person. It's interesting, the word present, it's a present when you are present.
Yes.
And, and I've been trying to really practice that listening with my clients and, and with this factory worker, like he came quite confused. And this is where we are many times in our lives, especially now with this Omicron situation, what are like kind of facing us all. We are sometimes confused, we are sometimes lost and, and we cannot solve those things just in our minds. It's a very narrow way of thinking, just thinking yourself. It, it is important to stop and think yourself, but then sharing with somebody is, is higher level of thinking. So when you actually need to talk what you think, you, you, you make it more sharp and more accurate and more tool-like so that you can use that and, and actually do some interventions yourself. So, so I, like, I could say that before I got married, I had this philosophy for coaching that I change people. And then, then I noticed that it's more that the people change themselves and I just give them the space. I ask questions and I challenge them, of course, because that's also sometimes needed. But give, give the space to speak themselves towards that change that they need and speak themselves towards the better life. And, and there's, you know, nobody is a guru and, and, but all of us need other people and other people help us to realize what is most important. So, yeah.
So you're saying that we should somehow make sure that somebody listens to us?
Yeah.
That would be one way of taking care of yourself right now?
Yes, yes. Actively searching people and, and forming good relationship where you actually can feel safe and feel that this person is really listening to me and, and I can really share my life. And when you share your life, then you understand more about yourself and what you need. And then you can actually go do the things that, what you need to do.
Yeah, and I think that earlier when we talked about this, you also brought up the same. We talked about listening, you said that we should also try to listen to someone else.
Yeah.
That as a way of, and you meant that also as a way of helping ourselves?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, so it's very good for us all to feel needed and, and that we're useful. And, and if we can listen to somebody and somebody can get benefits from that. So of course I can testify for that myself, working as a coach and as a professional in perhaps listening. And, and it's very rewarding when I can give that present to, to the other person of really caring for them and listening and really trying to see their perspective. And yeah, being there for them and it can be uplifting and energizing if you do that for somebody.
Yeah, and that's kind of in line what we, we see in the COVID research that's been conducted during this two years of unusual circumstances, that this question, how are you doing? Is the sort of, if you like, most effective leadership tool that you can have at the moment? You just need to make sure that you actually listen to what people say. So I guess if someone's now thinking, and hopefully no one is thinking like this, but if someone's thinking that I don't really have anyone to, to listen to or ask to listen to me, then perhaps the simple way to start would be just to ask that question as much as you can from the people that you do have something to do with. But if you think about sort of working life and creating a more sustainable, socially sustainable working life, i.e. a working life where we would all feel better and be able to sort of more, if you like, a holistic wellbeing situation for everyone, what, what would, what would you see as central?
Well, I think focus on people, like focus on the listening is of course one of what we just discussed. And, and having, so a lot of the times, especially when we move to like video-based interaction, it's most of the times these meetings seem to be very kind of agenda-focused and really to the point type of meetings. So understanding that we need to have the different gears. Also in the workplace, we need to have that slower gear of listening and, and, and being heard and making sure that need is met because you might get a lot of complications, unnecessary complications for your kind of agenda also if there's a lot of ambivalence in people, so like mixed feelings. And it's, it's reality that we all face ambivalence, like perhaps many times a day, all of us. So, so it's important sometimes to stop and, and see what is the ambivalence so that people can be more clear about themselves and the agendas. And then you can move to the agenda kind of more, more firmly. So it's good to have different sorts of meetings. So there's this, even like, we know also that with video, especially when you have really the face and you have the video on, you can get some of this slower gear interaction going on as well. And we are also testifying this in our Hintsä Certified Coach Program where we get quite good feedback. It's completely remote education, but we actually get good feedback exactly about this interaction and this listening and this, this presence. Online. So, so it's, it's quite interesting. And but you really need to focus, have the video on and watch to the person and watch them like we do now. So you're watching my face and how I'm responding and watching the face of the other and, and speaking with the person actually.
So maybe from that, like the number one piece of advice right now is that if you've been staring at the black screen with just people's names on it, then the number one, well, maybe first step, one thing to do is to put the camera on and at least try to meet virtually, if you can't physically.
Yeah.
Because I think that, that I've, I've seen that during this time a lot, that people don't, not everybody wants to open the camera. And I'm sure everyone's experienced that. So that might make you feel better if you tried to meet someone at least through the camera. But I'm thinking that, if you're thinking about now this, you're coaching a lot of people and I'm sure you're discussing also this extraordinary situation and how it's kind of straining our resilience and challenging us in new ways. So what are your, what would be your, if you give advice now? What's, what, what do you tell the client? I know that you will always tailor it and you will have different approach. But if you like, general advice to someone right now, working in an organization, coping with pandemic, coping with this moment, thinking about this long spring?
Yeah, yeah. So, so how to get more resilience?
Yeah, and basically like if you feel like, what am I, how am I going to get through this? Which seems to be like this tiredness, I'm tired of all of this. So, so you're mentally strained and you've probably also been, been stuck at home for a long time. And, and so how would you, what would your sort of to-do list be? What would it look like? What would you say that one should start with? Open the camera, that was one. Ask someone how they're doing, but what else?
Yeah, and, and any, like generally open the eyes and what resources, opportunities are close by. And we started this before the cameras came on about how we sometimes don't see to the like close proximity of ourselves. We sometimes see clearer when we are outside our home and at work and sometimes we don't see so clear what is in front of us. So perhaps opening eyes to that one, that what do we have here? And this, this has been one of the key methods of Dr. Aki Hintsä and then myself in working with Formula One at least, that, that make your words small and get, get the meaning from there because there will be so many vultures pecking you around you and trying to get peace of you. And you need to build your own bubble where you get meaning, good relationships, good life. And, and if you base your life on what is out there, could the grass be greener somewhere there?
Yeah, which is very typical for everyone, not just Formula One drivers.
Yeah, yeah. So if, if you, if you base and, and you, you notice your aspiration being something of this sort, that the grass is greener somewhere else, then that might not be the most long-lasting strategy for good life because in the end, best things in life can be found actually surprisingly near.
So, and I'm guessing that lots of people watching this have been in their own bubble, whether they wanted to or not. So how do you turn that, I'm actually forced to be in this bubble? It's not a choice. I'm not Sebastian Vettel, you know, protecting myself from the vulture, vultures that want to take a paparazzi picture of me, but I'm rather an office worker in, in Finland where the winter doesn't seem to end and Omicron doesn't seem to end either. So how do I appreciate my closed bubble?
Yeah, yeah. So like, do who you are is, is also like one advice. And what can you do so that you can express yourself? What is nice for you to do? And, and like use, use the words forced to be like in a certain context. You know, you cannot perhaps go to the office, you perhaps cannot go now to the gym where you would like or your dancing class which you enjoyed. And then discuss with somebody that what could be the other form, the other dancing? So you cannot go dancing, so what, what else could be there? So there could be something that could somehow replace it. So, so you need to find something that is nice and pleasurable for you. Nobody is a superhuman and, and you know this, best athletes in the world, they work really hard, but they work because they love what they do so much. So, so it's, I think it applies to all of us that we need to find what is nice and feasible for us and do it, do those things mostly which, which are nice and feasible and not trying to think about life like, let's say Rocky Balboa, that I just always wake up 5:00 AM and, and drink 10, 10 eggs, raw eggs and push hard every day and use my willpower to get, get a good life. And it's rather kind of more soft approach that try to find something that is feasible for you and do what is nice for you and, and try to map different options. And if, if somebody is in coaching with me, then I try to ask that, okay, what have you enjoyed before the pandemic? And like the dancing could be one and what could be there now? And perhaps there's a video class of some sorts or doing, like there's lots of options nowadays which, which can at least somehow replace that method of enjoyable life that was in the past.
That I can, I can also hear people thinking in their heads that I cannot take another virtual anything. I want to be, so I guess one thing to do is try to get over that and understand this, that, well, now I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, but the way I'm, I'm listening to you, it sounds like it's about accepting your present situation and trying to find something in it that will give you pleasure. Rather than thinking that something somewhere used to be like something or that. So kind of, we're talking about mental training here. We're talking about working with your head.
Yeah.
So when your head says that before the pandemic, I could go to the gym and I could go to there and da, 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 I could do things. I was at the office, I love being with my colleagues. And instead of thinking about that, trying to think about, well, right now I'm here and maybe if I do this, that would, could make me feel a bit better. The soft, small, rather than remembering something or imagining something that could be? Is that what you're saying or?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's one thing, but also perhaps like acknowledging that, that I feel frustrated and disappointed that I cannot do what I love to do. So that's, that's good to acknowledge and kind of face. And, and then it starts to be rumination if you say day after day after day after day and it's not useful for you and it's annoying for others as well. And then you need to start to look at what could I do now? And, but it also could be like with some, some of my clients, it like the pandemic has been an opportunity to do something else. Like always when like a big shift in the society comes, then, then it's an opportunity for really something else. And then you can look at that, what is working and what's not working in your life? And what way I see it and in my coaching is that at the end of the day, we have three different sorts of resources which bring resilience. It's the physical resource, psychological resource and social resource. So how are you in these resources? And how is, how are your relationships? And you are not traveling now and how's your relationship with your wife or your husband or your kids? And, and how has that, that been? And, and, and then that could be one thing that, hey, that's, there's an opportunity to do that. So I, let's say I cannot do the dancing and there's nothing to replace that. Okay, that's fine. Then there's other things, like there's the psychological thing and, and there's the social thing. And huh, okay, that, that time with my kids, you are right. I haven't, I've been a really career-oriented, traveling a lot. That I enjoyed that and perhaps neglected my kids a bit. But now actually opportunity to do a bit more, more of that. And, and because there's seasons in life and that this, this gives us interesting season for something else that we didn't do in the past and we could focus on this. And this is, this is what in the athletic context, we also try to do that if there's injured leg, then we focus on the upper body. So you need to find where you, what you can do.
I like that. So now that we have the injured leg of Corona, we focus on the upper body. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the old cliche, I use this myself when I teach or train people. I, I say that Corona is an opportunity to learn about the organization, about yourself as a leader. And actually in our interviews, people do respond to that and they start talking about these very things. I've had several top manager, managers saying to me that, yes, now that I don't travel, I've actually met my children or, you know, so it, it, but then at the same time, must is not always something that makes people react positively. Many of us don't like that if we have to. It's like we like to choose. So this means you have to wrestle your mind or like try to, are you saying that making these maps or thinking about your life in seasons and compartments is one way of helping yourself to cognitively understand it?
Yeah, 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 definitely. So, so like you, you can, like athletes use the word or in athlete, athlete context, we use the word periodization, that you periodize, you cannot do everything all the time.
Although we, we try.
Yeah, so, so like you need to focus. So let's say there's a base endurance season for a couple of months and then there's, then you start to go more to sport specific needs. Perhaps like you build some base strength and then you build maximum strength and then you, then you have your speed strength and then you go to the competitive season. So, so, and, and also you vary between the lower body and upper body. So you, you try to think about where to focus. And I think it same applies to these three different resources that I discussed. So the psychological, social and physical and, and not each week you, you can get like the all optimal training in. So perhaps some week you don't do one training session or zero, but let's say you spend super good social time with your family and, and then that was 100% that's social. Perhaps next week you can put a bit lower emphasis on the family and then, then you, you do the physical and, and try to rotate. And it's good to think about like the whole year that if you just focus on one thing, then you neglect the other tools too. So, so trying to have that all in balance.
I was, you've, you've used examples of, of your superstar coachees and, and then we've discussed this beforehand, that we want to make sure that this is relevant for whomever. This is not something that, oh, be like maximum performance all the time, but rather that be aware of yourself, more aware of yourself as a person, as an employee, as a leader, whatever you are, a student. But I'm thinking that, that, well, I know, that's all I'm asking, that I know that, that many of the things that apply to superstars and super executives and these people that we look up to are actually still things that apply to anyone. So what are the sort of, what are the universalities when it comes to taking care of yourself holistically?
Yeah, so all of us, like we started this discussion, we need other people, so.
Yes, and that's one of our big problems at the moment.
Yes, exactly. And, and hopefully all of you who are listening can find somebody like you also said, that if it's like, if you are in the university, there's some counselors in university to reach out or, or it's a friend or it's a family member, hopefully. Or everybody has at least one person to really reach out and, and that's, that's really important. And then provide that ear to somebody. So that's really fundamental, we all need that. And especially I face when I coach leaders, they found it hard to open up because they are the ones who are leading, they are the ones who are listening to other people's problems, who is listening to them. So that is one specific population that is struggling with this, who is listening to me. And if there's nobody listening to them, they cannot make so good sense of their thinking and therefore cannot make so good decisions. So this is something that especially leaders need to really focus, that there's people who can, they, they can really trust and they can share. So that is, that is super important starting point. And then I would also say that really giving yourself time and this is an opportunity to perhaps for some people to give time for yourself also. You, you have less commute, you have less travel, you have less something because, because of the Omicron. So perhaps it's an opportunity to give time just for yourself and be with yourself and learn to be with yourself and hear yourself. And, and that can also start some processes that can bring about better life and, and better control.
That can also be very hard.
Yes.
Meditating is very hard.
Yeah.
Being silent with yourself is very hard.
Yeah.
So what do you say? If I, if you coach me and you tell me that you need to be with yourself, Herta, be better at being with yourself and I tell you that's hard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what, what do we do? Where do we go from here? It's hard, I don't like it. I don't like myself. I sit in silence and I'm like, no, bad thoughts, no, so.
Yeah, yeah, I see and it's a good question. And, and I'm, I'm a bit of an ADHD myself. I think I would have been diagnosed with ADHD in the school if, if that would have been then like a standard. And I focus really well when there's something also occupying me. So like, let's say for me, what works being with myself is a bike ride to office and, and back. So, so being on my bike is my meditation. So it doesn't work for everybody to just sit down. It's, it's a skill what everybody can of course practice, but then it doesn't like, and now we're perhaps talking about how the brain also works, that we need periods of time every day, every day where we don't consciously focus on something so we can get like both brain hemispheres work together and exchange information. And, and you can get that by if you are chopping wood, doing, doing something really monotonic or some person sitting in the sauna, some person riding the bike, some person riding the car, some person meditating. But the point is that we all need that, sometimes the space that where we don't consciously focus on something because then we actually miss the full potential of the brain to make sense of the world if we don't sometimes allow that holistic network to engage.
So the piece of advice here would be that you need to find, basically get to know yourself and understand that what works for you, where you can reach the Zen state by doing something or sitting down. I, I immediately thought about this and I run. So when I run, that happens to me, I, my head clears, I becomes empty. I, if I sit down, it's not working for me. That was, I was doing that for the interview, I was just joking. But, but yeah, I, I realized that I meditate when I run.
Yeah.
But anyway, so the advice here would be that you need to kind of think about yourself and the situations where you can switch off, if you like.
Yes, yes, yes.
Running, swimming, sitting down.
Yeah.
And not using your head. And that's one way of giving yourself some peace.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what else? What if I'm, I'm not motivated? I don't feel motivated. I feel tired, I don't want to do this. I want to meet other people, I want to go to the office, I don't want to, I don't want to get to know myself, I don't want to sit in my apartment anymore, I don't want to have. Um I want to meet other people. I want to go to the office. I don't wanna I don't wanna get to know myself. I don't wanna sit in my apartment anymore. I don't wanna have another Zoom.
Yeah, yeah.
What do I do then?
Yeah, then I would ask that uh that why, why, why you you don't, you seem you are not motivated. So then, of course, we would discuss that.
Hmm.
Why and what do you need right now?
Hmm. I need to meet other people.
You need to meet other people. There's a social need that is missing and and then then uh this is a need and this is a challenge and. And like we discussed, video can be a method, but also nowadays you can meet people also outside and. You can meet people like who are in your family perhaps, but some people don't have that. So. That's something that also worries me that when you're a student and living alone in a in a city which is not your home city and you are in your apartment, you cannot meet anybody. So that can be. That can be hard.
Yeah, and I know this is something our students are struggling with.
Yeah.
And 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 people who have just just started working in organizations, this comes in the interviews as well that. You might be sitting alone in your small apartment and working from there and you kind of lose sight of the collective.
Yeah.
You don't feel like you belong anywhere.
Yeah.
So. I know I'm asking you big questions, but what do what do I do then? What do we do about that? How do we try to, because the social, like you said, it's one of the the important needs at the same time, it kind of. It can kind of wither away and that's something that comes up in our interviews that the the leaders that I talk with, they're worried that like this sense of. Collectivity and working and at work is is kind of um, it seems to be, it's kind of like. It's it's everyone is needing it and wanting it and missing it, but same time it they don't, they they get more and more wrapped up in themselves. And focused on themselves.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's it's tough and and on a like a small level. Like doing the old fashioned, picking up the phone and calling somebody, already that can be can can be like you get some sense of. Connection and interaction going, but if if you're talking about the larger like. Uh feeling of relatedness in a and and belonging to a bigger crew. It's a big challenge and I I think the individual cannot so- solve that problem, but now we are we are we are we are like um. Both of us are interacting with people who can do decisions which create the environments which could help people to get that relatedness. So I I would. Really encourage to have also these online groups and 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 like the video on thing is. Is a great one and and having the different gears where you actually have small groups uh and the good group number is. Five to seven, eight starts to be too much, small groups where people can actually share how they are feeling. And and actually having that addressed uh and 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 then then you perhaps can move to the agenda. So. I would really encourage to also form this this uh online groups and ways of kind of creating those. Like like we we really experienced that and and it's it's been even surprising for me how good feedback this. Hintercode certification program has gotten because it's completely online and how they. And I felt connected with these people. I never met face to face a person from China, from Australia, from uh. From Greece and and I I I feel quite warmly with the the interaction with them and it's all online.
Yeah, and this is actually something that I'm thinking that I've also heard in the interviews, that some when you're thinking, I'm thinking of now some of the interviewees say said that. They're they're all talking about ways of trying to um to to make the virtual space interesting for people. Make it sort of something where you want to come.
Yeah.
And that what you just said is something that they've also made named that you have meetings that don't have an agenda. Out outside of actually trying to go like, how are you doing? What's going on? Are you feeling tired and together kind of. Ruminating over the situation.
Yeah. And perhaps one one point about that, because many times uh what I also get from the clients is that there's like um. Sense that you need to get to the, you, everybody's waiting when you get to the point. So giving up that 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 you need to. Get to the agenda, let's get over with this, how are you? So so shallow, I'm fine, weather is good. And everybody's waiting that let's get to the point now. So 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 the leaders who organize meetings, video meetings. Be be aware that there's really also this uh not superficial but really time to focus on what is going on. In people's lives really.
Yeah, so that this kind of meeting each other is not something that happens before we get to the business, but it's a separate thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Um now now I'm I'm just thinking about then um if we now. Well, we are in this situation that we are in, but let's try to talk about performance a little bit, because that's something that you coach people. Uh different kinds of people about. I think that one of the things that um everyone struggles more or less is what's enough, what's too much. Like what is sort of um, like I think that a lot of peo- a lot of people are allergic to this optimizing performance and I think that. That can be a bit of a myth, because like you said, life is seasons, it's ups and downs and it that part of it is accepting that. But. How do you get better at looking at yourself and kind of acknowledging yourself that, okay. This is a point where I actually should push myself a little bit more.
Hmm.
And that this is a point, like how do you get better at self-management?
Hmm, it's it's a good and again comple- complex question and and one one key is, I I repeat myself a lot, but. Uh discussing with other people that understanding yourself better, what do you need? And 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 discussing with others can help in that and then stopping yourself. Well, you can go for a run and you realize more of what you what do you need and what is important in your work and and so on and so forth. Um so you you really need that and and I I talk talk a little bit about how the brain works and and. This goes back to the brain physiology, neu- neurobiology that that if. We don't stop and and give up of that constant focusing on something like the devices or like. Being present with some something all the time, then we cannot realize that what is the right thing to do, really. So the two things are that discussion with somebody and then taking really time for yourself, feasible time, like we discussed, that what is a sauna, is it a run, is it a. Just yoga or what whatever it is.
Yeah, this starts to sound like this Corona is actually a great opportunity.
Hmm.
Because it forces us to do both. Well, you can not discuss like this with with as much as you would otherwise, but you have a lot of time with yourself.
Yeah.
At least, you know, you're uh away from the office, so you're during your working, if you're working alone, ob- obviously, we we now. Assume that the person is not with their entire extended family in a small apartment, which can then make things exponentially more difficult, but like. Yeah, so this this could be one way of looking at this Corona as an opportunity to look at yourself.
Yeah, for sure. I that what I experienced in my clients, many of my clients and it's quite interesting how our mind works and. Most of the times, the problem is not the problem, but our solution to the problem is the problem. And and.
Meaning.
So so like, there's Omicron and there's all the challenges that that brings forth and and there's frustration um. And and then we we might be frustrated because we are frustrated, then we decide to do something um. For the frustration, we try to get rid of the frustration. So so like. What I'm trying to say here is 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 uh when when you experience difficulties in your life, then you need to embrace it. By facing it yourself and then discussing with others. And then you can start, even though the problem doesn't go away. Let's say you cannot meet your friends, but at least somebody is listening to you and understanding that you 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 are a bit. You are frustrated for that uh situation that you cannot see your friends, but at least somebody heard that, somebody acknowledged that, you acknowledge it yourself. So you can uh decrease the impact of that on you. So there's also a saying that name it to tame it. So you kind of. Name named that, so I have this frustration and it is there, uh but it's not going to. Overrule the whole being uh of of myself, if that makes sense and and and. I cannot see my friends now, but I can do something else and I acknowledge this frustration, somebody else acknowledges it. And it's there, fine. And it's it's always gonna be, there's always gonna be some different frustrations and disappointments and. And and loss and and failure and grieving and all all those kinds of things. But you need to acknowledge those and talk about those and then. They grow a bit smaller and and don't kind of overrule everything in our lives.
Is this like a familiar concept to this saying someone once said to me a long time ago that feelings are just feelings?
Yeah.
Which was then to me a totally alien thought, but then when I grew older, I kind of understood.
Yeah.
So it's kind, we're really talking about controlling your feelings, understanding that it's okay to feel them, but then not letting them overtake you.
Yeah, 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 exactly. And and in order to understand the feelings, you you need to. Yeah, it's a skill, it's a skill, you need to practice it and and stop and. Experience and now this is an opportunity, this Corona time to also perhaps stop and experience what are you feeling and. And and then understand what messages those feelings bring and then sometimes share with somebody and then that grows less and. And it is actually very interesting and one 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 interesting kind of. I think I want to s- s- say about this still is is uh, you know, when you go, if you're an alcoholic and you got treatment, that the famous thing is that you say, I'm an alcoholic. That's the same phenomenon that when you name it, you tame it. And and actually, when you say it, you are less of that, actually. So. You make you make it very concrete and tangible and that is out there, but it's not ruling me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're acknowledging it, you're kind of taking it in rather than being like, oh, no, no, this is a bad thing.
Yeah.
Example that springs to mind is my colleague is home, working, uh having to work from home, they're all quarantined because they potentially have. Corona and she's feeling very frustrated and very kind of um stuck. And then. She said that when she and she feels like she should be doing work, but she cannot get anything done. And then she said that, she said to her colleague that I feel like this. I can't get anything done.
Hmm.
And that was already enough. She started feeling better. And the colleague said that we'll go watch Netflix and we'll work this next week. And so obviously the pressure came off as well, but sometimes it's just saying things out loud can. Solve the situation, if you like, the worst part of it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And and my mistake as a younger coach was always that I tried to always solve the problems very quickly. And that's what I learned from my wife that. What my wife has a problem, I have a good solution, I tell tell the solution to the wife and it gets worse. And I was like, what is going on? I give this great solution to you and and this gets worse. And and then I learned that it's really like. Yes, you just need to listen and 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 that is the solution, the listening, actually. And and even if we.
She didn't wanna have a solution, she wanted you to hear her.
Yes, exactly, that that just that she's getting heard and and we don't always need to get the problem solved like. I need to meet the friend and it it's n- not necessarily the problem that you the person needs to meet the friend, but the problem is that they need to be heard, that they have. A longing for somebody and 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 that can be already the solution.
That's interesting and difficult at the same time.
Yeah.
Um you also talk about a lot how physical activity uh has a huge impact on our cognitive capabilities, right?
Yeah.
And do you also work with people who don't, who are not necessarily, how do I say, like naturally inclined to do sports? So you were, okay, so what do you do then? Because we know from research that obviously holistic care of yourself, taking care of. So how do you start with someone who doesn't really want to like sports, but.
Hmm.
Now, there's some kinds of movements should happen. So what what happens then? What does Heiki do?
Yeah, what is feasible? It's it's super good question because not all types of exercise is is for everybody and.
No, and I think that like oftentimes people when when even something, someone like you can be intimidating. It's like, what do I need to become some superhuman now?
Yeah.
So that's why I'm trying to get you to sort of give an example of someone who's not, you know, I wanna run a marathon, but rather like.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to be me.
Yeah, e- exactly, exactly. And and what what could be nice, so so uh. Trying to find what 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 is feasible for the for the individual and it's 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 good point that not everybody needs to run marathons and. Um there there's a reason why uh in Finnish and also in English, sport and exercise are two different words.
What is that?
Yes, so Liikunta Urheilu in Finnish, sport, uh exercise and sport. So so. Exercise is movement, moving uh the uh using the motoric system, the muscles, the joints.
Hmm.
And and sport is uh using the motoric system with the competition element in it. So that's the difference, there's a competition element. Not everybody likes competition. And and we get mixed and. Uh we we use the word spo- sport, urheilu, a lot to describe all kinds of movement, all kinds of exercise. And not all people like sport, competition. Uh and and that can be a mental uh hindrance because like you say that. Uh if you are not associated or you don't feel relatedness with athletes and people who are super fit. Then this board is a word that is a turn off for you. But actually, exercise is for everybody. This is exercise, if I if I do this, you know, if I move my arms. And 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 you get more ownership for the. Just with this more word tricks, you get more ownership for what you do. Sports is not your thing, okay, fine. Well, exercise actually is and can be my thing. So so uh you can get this connection with what you do, just with the small word.
Change of words.
Yeah, and and I had a client who always said to me, not always, but in the beginning, that I'm bad at sport. So I think this was exactly about that. And and he he had, he's super intelligent. He actually had like a bit of Asperger type of thing and. And in his school time, the physical education teacher thought that he's just bad and he was not taught in a good way and and. And got bad experience in 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 exercise, in physical activity. And and we started to explore what he can do. And we we used that what he could do and and then he started to develop from that and he started to became um. Yeah, further and further. And that was actually one of my most rewarding clients ever, like how he could, he transformed himself from this. A bit overweight, bad posture, young man, he was twenty years when he started, to this guy who has good posture uh. Standing up more straight and having more confidence. Sometimes we can use the physical to impact on the mental. And in this case, it happened that he changed the perspective, this exercise is for me, I can actually do it, I'm not bad at this, I can improve, I can develop. Myself in this area and I can be this this uh, uh I'm not not like an athlete, but I can be this fit. Uh fit nerd, how he explained it to me. So he was like a computer, so yeah.
So how did he find the physical? Exercise that he wanted to do? How did he go from the resistance to the, I actually like this?
Yeah.
Did you experiment or how did you get to that?
Yeah, we tried different things and and one thing is that uh. It's doesn't make sense to do supernormative tests. So let's say you do a push-up test and you do five push-ups and then you say you. Fitness class is one from seven. So so but rather like, okay, let's do a push-up test and you do five. You did five now and and. Um let's let's uh make a program and we discuss about it and we test it in a couple of weeks. And okay, now you did eight push-ups, fantastic. And. Then then.
Small goals.
Yeah, yeah, small, small goals and goals that you can compare yourself to what you were yesterday rather than. To somebody uh who to somebody else or or, yeah, so. And this is one of the keys in my coaching and how I feel about human life anyways is that it's makes it's most productive to compare. Only to yourself, aim to compare, strive to compare to yourself. Of course, we have the tendency to compare to others as well, but. At least have the striving to compare to yourself because we are also unique individuals and and. Different genes, different experiences, and there's no single same individual than you or me. And and so that that's why it's most accurate and most. Useful to just compare to yourself what you were.
Yeah, not the images of Instagram.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, someone needs to tell that to the whole sort of pop teenage population of the world.
Yeah.
Um but that's a different discussion. Um, okay, um. I think we're getting excellent coaching session here from you, Eki. But uh so basically what you're saying that even if I don't feel like I'm. Naturally inclined to do sports, I can find by trying it, not think about sports, but like find ways of moving myself.
Hmm.
In small ways and finding pleasure and kind of maybe.
Competence, you know, you can get co- even if you do the five push-ups. You you practice and you get better and then you can do the seven. So that's competence, we all like that.
Yes, we do. Yeah, small steps that makes you happy. Um but what about then? Doing this sustainably, because I'm thinking that like one of the big themes of a future work um and. Organizations in general, everyone will have to think about their lifelong learning. We need to kind of be. Think we need to become better in managing ourselves and we need to uh kind of understand that we need to learn all the time. But we would also need to do that somehow sustainably.
Hmm.
Not like hamsters in a wheel.
Yeah, yeah.
So what would you, how would you, what would your approach for this be?
Well, that's a great question and I have a personal example. I I had a study leave uh when my first daughter was born, uh two thousand seventeen. Um so I did my second master's degree, which was must uh uh sport and exercise psychology. So usually there's. Sport and exercise psychology, it's not only sport, psycho sport and exercise psychology.
Right, different psychology for both, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's a different thing. So yeah.
I learned that today.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So uh. So I did that and I I felt so energized after that study leave. And and in Finland, you also can get this opportunity that you 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 get some some conversation to to do study. So how about that? To do study. So how about that? That's fantastic. I I think it's. It's so great that we have this opportunity and and I encourage many people who who are demotivated at work. And and cannot find the red thread that what, why am I actually doing this? And sometimes getting that. That study leave, find something that interests and and completely step out. So that you can step back in or actually step to other direction. Uh many times people dream about, I personally also, I I remember two thousand sixteen was a crazy year for me. I. Company was growing a lot. I was involved in everything. I thought I was irreplaceable. And I I was too busy, I was not present to nobody, least to my wife. And and I actually noticed myself dreaming of getting to the military and, you know, sorting out the socks. And 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 I I be- I dreamt of this because la- later on I I reflected this and I dreamt of this because. Um I really needed a break and 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 get out of the hamster wheel as you say. And and the military was like, okay, I just want something simple. There's too many things going on.
Yeah, I've heard people who have burnout, they say they dream about going to jail. Cause then you would be forced to do nothing. And it's a terrible thing to say, but I've actually heard a few, my sort of um. People I know who who say that when they were burnt out, they felt they were dreaming of going to jail. So that's like someone would force you not to do anything. So how do you force yourself not to do anything? Say that you're economically in a situation that you can. Not work. So so what do you do?
Yeah, yeah. So I would also argue that because there's always a price to pay. So now there's economical price. That is one price. And there can be psychological price, social price, physical price, what price you want to pay. So. So uh and that is one of the discussions that especially with the leaders I have uh time and time again is that. How will you measure your life and what are the KPIs for life? And it's easy to measure money and those kinds of things, but there's other things also and. And and then, like, what's the option that? Okay, you need the money to pay for for your mortgage. Yeah, okay. Yes, that's, that is. One constraint that you can choose to take or not to take. You can get rid of that mortgage as well. There's a price to pay. There's there's a monetary price to pay. But uh if you continue in a miserable job. You are lost, you feel in a hamster field, you dream of being in a jail rather than doing this. So how about that price? You continue that path. So which, so. And life is hard. Sometimes you need to make really hard choices and you pay a big price, but I think the upside here is that. In the world, in the country that we are living in, we get to choose what price we pay. We get to choose it. It's. Yes. And but there is a price. And then if you accept it, then you can be content. So it's it's hard, it's still hard, of course.
It's not simple, no. Well, um I'll then ask you a sort of work-related question that I'm, I know that you're familiar with many workplaces. Hmm and I know that you, you you know a lot about what works and what doesn't at work. When we think, when we're talking about holistic well-being. So now if you're thinking of the future of work, us all going onwards from here. After this time will end too, like all times end. Um. So what do you think is most important? What are the most important elements of socially sustainable working life? Holistic well-being, supporting working life. What to focus on?
Yeah, I think the gears uh is one that remember to be also slow, not getting to the point, not always having the agenda. You need to have those fast-paced meetings, let's get to the point, let's be efficient, half an hour meeting. Organize sometimes longer meetings, whether it's the online, whether it's the face-to-face, if if the situation permits. Have those, that slower interaction and and the leaders need to have the skill of. Of really allowing this atmosphere in the group where everybody gets heard and and you can you can. Be free and vulnerable to share what you feel and what you experience. And and that just levels out uh kind of the territory in front of you and in front of the team so that you can actually then focus on the. Things that really matter. If you if you lose that slower gear, then you lose everything. So um and the problem is that. Sometimes you can do, get away with one week of not having that social slow time. Uh sometimes you can get away with having two weeks, but when those weeks accumulate, as we see in this COVID time, then. It starts to be a problem and then we get all sorts of stupid like obstacles uh. Uh in in the way of the mission that we try to get forward.
Yeah, I think that's a great piece of advice. So um so think in terms of temporalities. Of what you do and how much time you allow. And are you saying that basically that allow time for the social, for the meeting in whatever form and shape you can do that?
Yeah, yeah. And and seek advice if you as a leader or as a manager who's organizing group. Situation, ask for assistance, ideas, what could you do and. And we we have also hosted in Hintsaa like this virtual kick-offs for for the seasons and. And I was very skeptical myself, but it turned out we had one full day of kickoff online. And I was like, this is waste of time. A part of me was thinking and and uh actually. It was not, it was super cool and but you need to facilitate in a good way.
I was trying to say that why, why did it work? What do you think? What was the key thing? Why wasn't it a waste of time? What made it, what made it feel like it was worth your time, worth their time?
Yeah, there was authentic sharing of where the people were at and who they were and like one one task was uh. A song of your life. So so there there was a. You you chose a song of your life before the event and then in the event, the all of those songs were played and. Everybody would guess that what is, whose song is this one and whose song is this one and. And having that, you know, more flavor to more pers- personality in in that, so. And and then everybody could explain why is this the song of my life and tell more about myself as a person and. People really enjoy talking about themselves and uh who they are, what they are, and we are really missing that, but. Online you can also facilitate when you think creatively, some 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 options for them.
That's great. Um now, um I think we're about about done here, we where our time is coming up. But I think that um now. I know again I'm asking a big question, I'm asking a lot of big questions, but you get to be everybody's coach today, so. Now we're looking at the spring and the starting point doesn't necessarily feel all that great, but we are hoping that it will look better and. Somehow now, what would be your advice? What to do? How to look forward? And see the glimmer of hope, like what to focus on? Is it the the same advice that we already talked about in the beginning? Focus on the your small bubble? Find something good in it.
Hmm, yeah, I I would perhaps go go back to this, uh the problem might not be the problem, but the solution might be the problem. So let's say the frustration of not. Being able to see a friend and 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 the like the frustration or or. You could create that as a problem that, you know, I cannot see a- anybody and I'm just repeating that message in my head, but. Um how about kind of pulling back and and. Yes, like we discussed, sharing that, acknowledging that emotion and sharing it with somebody, but then also like we discussed. Finding somebody who you can uh give that presence of of listening and 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 stop, stop, stop with somebody who needs. Um yeah, somebody and and sometimes like. I would give a practical advice in the, like how to listen to somebody. When you ask them, how are you doing? And it's it's such a trivial question that nobody is actually answering it. If you ask it three times, then then you get actually an answer most of the times. So.
So, so be persistent.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, so like, how are you? And then I'm fine. Okay. How are you actually? I'm I'm fine. Seriously, how are you? And and then you actually might get get what is going on.
Great. So we all go into the spring with the mission of asking at least someone three times how they're really doing. Super. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming and joining us and good luck everyone. It will be a good spring. See you soon. Bye.